All of the major metro areas, Des Moines, surrounding cities, Iowa City, Ames, Dubuque, et cetera. Waterloo, however, does not have one. So that's why we'd like to take a look at implementing that here. Couple reasons to look at adopting a food truck ordinance. First and foremost, a code change. We've got a couple different business licenses in our city code, but none of them really fit with this type of business. We've got a peddler's license and a transient merchant license. Other cities, city clerk's offices issue those type of licenses and have taken the steps to convert to a food truck so that it fits with the type of business that's being regulated. Sanitation, want to make sure that there's a plan for collecting litter. Anytime you're eating outside, there's, you know, paper plates, napkins, forks, et cetera. And then also wanting to make sure that there's a plan for how cooking grease is getting disposed of. Parking, planning and zoning would be reviewing parking for locations where vending would take place to ensure that there's adequate space for vehicles for the business and then also for the food truck. And then fire safety is the last reason that we want to take a look at having a food truck license. And we've got our fire marshal, Brock Welliver, here to talk to us about fire safety.
Hello, Brock Welliver with Waterloo Fire Rescue. And nationally, cooking fires are one of our biggest fires in both residential and commercial structures. So it's no surprise that when you put these on four wheels and move them down the road, those scenarios continue to follow. So NFPA 96 has adopted a new standard in 2021. And when we do adopt a new 2021 IFC codes, that should be adopted with that as well. And so there are some regulations in there as far as, you know, the amount of LP stored on some of these vehicles. Are contained within the food truck themselves. And then setbacks from commercial properties for the ingress or egress out of those commercial structures as well.
So for, for the fire safety check for the ordinance, or excuse me, for the license, the fire department would do a review of class three and class four food service licenses. So the class refers to handling perishable food products. So anytime you're taking raw hamburger and cooking it on a grill, you want to make sure that it's cooked to a certain standard. And then naturally, when you have a grill, that's going to trigger having LP, things like that on the food truck. And then we'd also be proposing adding a site inspection for fire safety at special events. We wouldn't be requiring those food trucks to get a food service, or excuse me, to get a mobile food vendor license, but we would be going through and doing a site inspection because you're going to have a lot of LP tanks around a city park in a very confined space. So the potential for an issue is definitely there. So who does and does not need a food truck license? Basically, anybody selling food to the public from a food truck, push cart, or temporary structure would need to get a license. Exempt types of businesses would be a catering business, concession stand at a sports or recreational venue, farmer's market. So if you're selling, if you're growing corn and you're selling it at the farmer's market, you don't have to have a food truck license. Restaurants and businesses that would be delivering food orders directly to customers, route delivery drivers not making incidental sales, and then children operating a lemonade or food stand. Those are, surprisingly, I learned, children's food stands are already exempted from state law. So no need to worry about that.
What about the events? So like a vendor at Friday Lou, do they have to have?
So we would propose that they not have to get the permit, but we would propose that they go through a site inspection.
Every time that they set up?
Yep, just to kind of take a look at the overall layout of the food vendor setting up. Yep. Down the road, what we would like to look at doing is a special event permit. So then those types of checks would be occurring anyway as part of the setup for the special event. That's for another, another day.
Okay.
Little bit about the application process. So the ordinance we put together is based off of a license for, that was written out of Clive. A lot of the Des Moines metro communities have similar requirements. And then I also based the application process off of Cedar Falls. So that if you're applying over in Cedar Falls, you're basically going to be giving us the same kind of licensing requirement. So it's nothing in addition in either community. So we'd be gathering the applicant's contact information, and if they were operating out of a vehicle, the driver's license, make, model, et cetera of the vehicle. We'd ask for a photograph of the mobile food unit along with a sketch for the vending setup, including trash cans and seating, plan for disposing of liquid and solid waste, list of locations where the applicant would operate, and then a sales tax permit, a food establishment license, and proof of insurance. The application would then be reviewed by police, fire, planning and zoning, and other relevant departments. So let's say they wanted to set up in Lincoln Park, for example. We'd send it over to leisure services to give that approval. And then anytime a license would be recommended for denial, there'd be an appeals process for the applicant to go through where they would appeal that decision to the city council. License term and fees. Proposing a tiered license term setup. A seven-day license would be $50, 30-day license could be $100, and a one-year license, $500. Looked at some of the other larger communities in Iowa to kind of determine what is reasonable or kind of what the trend is for those licensing fees. Cedar Falls does $50 for a one-month license, $500 for a one-year license. Iowa City was pretty high with $1,000 for a one-year license. Dubuque has it structured based off of the number of locations. And then Cedar Rapids, which I thought was a good way to go, was that same tiered license structure of $100 for a week, 300 for six months, 550 for one year. And then on top of that, they charge a $50 application fee for filing the application.
Kelly?
Yep.
Have you considered the six months since some of these food trucks are in service during the winter months?
Say that again?
I said, have you considered, it looks like you're doing seven, 30, and one year. Whereas Cedar Rapids does, you know, seven, you know, then they do six months and one year. And the reason I was asking about the six-month license is because a lot of food truck vendors don't operate in the wintertime.
Right.
But yet they're buying a year license. Have you considered anything like that to put it at six months?
Yeah, could definitely consider that. Yeah, this is, this is very open for, open to suggestion.
And the fee is every time? So if there is seven day, they would have to, every time they move to a new location for a new seven days, they'd have to have?
Yeah, and that was more or less to kind of create a more flexible license for a food truck that would come in from out of town. There are a couple that do come from different communities that just set up for a day, post on Facebook that, hey, we're going to be at this location on this day. And then they don't come back for like a month or so.
Kelly, any idea of how many actual trucks we're talking as far as in the city that operate?
We believe there's about 10 that operate either pretty regularly or periodically come into town. So not a ton of food trucks, but we have started to see more pop up over the last couple of years.
And I think we will see more.
Yeah. I think it's really starting to catch on in our community. And operating rules, sales would be allowed from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM each day. Kind of the thought process behind that was farmer's market, for example, that gets started at 8 o'clock on Saturday mornings, and there are some food trucks that come there. So we want to accommodate their ability to sell early in the morning. And then 10:00 PM, that cutoff time is primarily for public safety. We felt that it would be wise to shut off sales around 10, especially if there was a food truck setting up downtown. Don't necessarily want groups of people gathering around bar close time downtown.
So if you've got a food vendor that comes to the farmer's market, if they're not a weekly, if they're not a member of that farmer's market, then this would apply to them, even though they're setting up right by a farmer's market.
Correct. Yep.
Kelly, could there be maybe a special exemption or something? I know, you know, Jessica at Main Street had the food truck set up over on Forest Street this past year, but the year before, you know, up until like 1:00 or 2:00 AM. Is that possible that we could have a special exemption or something like that as well?
Yeah, I do have it in the ordinance that if they're vending, like for a special event, for example, they have to stay open for the duration of, they can stay open for that duration of that event. Because I know Irish Fest goes past 10 as well. Yep.
And on the, on the 10:00 PM, I do know there's one over on 11th Street that stays open quite late because a lot of third shift cops go over there and eat.
Okay.
But that would, at 11th and Sycamore or Lafayette over there. So I'm just curious when they shut them down at 10:00 PM.
Yeah, and their recommendation came from the police department.
From them?
Yeah.
Evidently, they don't want them going over there.
But maybe that individual doesn't eat at that food truck, so we may have to talk about it more.
That individual works first shift.
Yep, he does. Okay. Use of amplified sound, flashing lights, noise-making devices, et cetera, would be prohibited. Vending would be permitted on hard surface areas and parks and on private and public parking lots. Trying to get away from having sales occurring in the street, people gathering in the street, the potential for someone to get hit by a vehicle. And then this would also incorporate an existing approval process that Leisure Services has in place for proposing to vend within city parks. And then finally, the license would have to be displayed on the vehicle somewhere. And then we would be looking at implementing this in January of 2022. So in the event that the food truck would have to potentially purchase additional equipment to meet fire safety standards, there would be plenty of time hopefully to get everything up to snuff so that they would be able to pass fire inspections. That's it. Any questions?
Yeah, Kelly, that, as Councilman Bowles mentioned, there's this place over on Sycamore, not Sycamore, Lafayette, I believe, and 11th Street. And I know I've had complaints that that thing is parked there all the time. Is there going to be a restriction on the length of time that a food truck or vendor could be at a certain location, such as they have to move every couple of days or something like that, which the complaining party to me on several occasions has said that there is a day amount that a truck can be parked and it needs to be moved? So is this ordinance going to address that issue as well?
Yeah, the ordinance addresses, so if you vend on public property, you have to move it off each day at the close of business. It doesn't necessarily address private property, however, that situation could maybe be addressed with the enforcement, the parking regulations, having to move your vehicle. Would that be addressed with a food truck, private property, or is it just in the street?
There's one on Sixth Corners that's almost permanent because it has its own electricity stand, you know, post there and everything.
We could look at that.
Yeah, that area needs to be addressed. Also, the concern that I have about waste discharge, either on public or private property from these, and I, I know that there's going to be some guidelines, but I would hope there would also be a fine schedule established if they're dumping any of their waste on either public or private property. I would take that as being a nuisance kind of issue as well as a sanitation issue. Right, Randy? Hello? No, that's okay.
Randy's getting ready for his presentation. Yeah. Any other questions?
How does this play into ice cream trucks? Are they the same thing or not?
So ice cream trucks would then fall under this.
This?
Yep. Ice cream trucks is part of the reason why we're looking at redoing the code. They just don't really fit well with the business licenses that we have in place now. The last time those were looked at was 2005. And ice cream trucks technically qualify as a transient merchant, but those fees are, it's like $45 per day, which I think is a little unreasonable. So they'd move over to the food truck department. Yep.
Can we regulate what music they play?
I didn't even know we still had ice cream trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
We have a lot of kids in our neighborhoods.
Oh, gosh, I want to tell them to come down my street.
They run.
It's that same song.
Any other questions?
When are you going to bring this back to us, Kelly?
I can, I'll need to make a couple tweaks based on conversation today, and I could potentially bring it back end of July.
Okay. Cool. Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to, no, I'm not going to turn it over. Okay, I'll keep going, keep going. All right. Thank you very much, Kelly. Next on our agenda is a presentation from Randy Bennett about waste management and C-MOM. So all over to you, buddy.
All right, perfect. Good afternoon, Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. So first off, I guess I'd like to just start off, it wasn't long after I started, we had some turnover in staff. And in that process, we actually looked at restructuring the Waste Management Department. Originally, it was kind of set up to where we had a department head along with a collection supervisor and then a treatment supervisor. After kind of evaluating just how the oversight of that department was, we actually did decide to restructure it to have a Director of Treatment and a Director of Collection and Project Management, and then a new position for which we are in the process of interviewing right now, which would be for a Safety and Compliance Director. So that way we can assist with training, not only in waste management, but all, all six departments within Public Works, and then eventually hopefully be able to expand throughout the city as well. So that's probably one of the largest things that, you know, that we've kind of done as far as the restructuring goes, as far as when it comes to waste management. So the first portion that we're actually going to talk about this afternoon is going to be the C-MOM program. And I'm actually going to turn it over to our C-MOM coordinator, Laura, which she'll kind of give you the update on that.
Okay. I'm Laura Mass, C-MOM Coordinator at Waste Management. I think you guys hear C-MOM and consent decree a lot, and sometimes they're used interchangeably. And hopefully, my presentation kind of clears up that division.
Can you lower your microphone there?
How's that?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So one of the things discussed at our initial C-MOM team meeting in October 2015 was production of a quarterly report to address the items listed out in the consent decree to kind of keep us on track. We submit courtesy copies of our operating report every month and any DNR reports we might have to the EPA. We use that opportunity to also submit these progress reports. Those are available, distributed through the city and also available to public upon request. And we use those reports to produce our annual status report, which is a required item. Our C-MOM program was a document that was drafted in response to the impending consent decree. The consent decree's express purpose, as we know, is to follow the Clean Water Act, and the C-MOM program encompasses those requirements, but also kind of clears up policies, procedures, et cetera, for everything associated with managing, operating, and maintaining our collection system. That is a living document, and we update it as needed. If there's major updates, we get those pre-approved by the EPA. Oh, my slide. Okay. So this table right here are the actual required projects for the master plan for the consent decree. We had submitted the master plan in 2018 and then had some follow-up correspondence between the city and them to kind of finally settle on this table of 12 projects. Those top items in gray are complete. We consider those complete. They include the foundation footing drain removal program in 15 and 16, service area 15 and 16, CIPP projects, Phase 3B and 3C, removal of some storm sewer inlets in service area 12, and smoke testing in service area 18. Those projects highlighted in green are going on right now. We've got the Dry Run Creek Lift Station and Interceptor, which is expected to be complete this summer. Titus Lift Station and Forest Main, design, design is underway and construction is expected to bid this fall. And then also the CIPP project, Phase 4A. Phase 4A was completed in November of 2020, and Phase 4A2 was just bid last week. Those three projects at the bottom in red with discussions with the EPA, those have been kind of pushed back to further timelines to reevaluate, to see if they're still necessary. The master plan also lays out projects for C-MOM. So the projects that were scheduled for 2018 to 2020 are shown here. We've got, let's see, we've got investigations in the east and west side interceptor. In 2019 and in 2020, we did some inspections of that large diameter pipe that runs along the river on both sides, and then also two phases of manhole inspections. Waste management with city engineering continues to address identified storm sewer cross-connections. And then, again, CIPP Phase 4A2. So a current project we've got kind of fast-tracked is the Highway 63 Interceptor upgrade. In 2015, we did hydraulic modeling that identified capacity constraints along this corridor and a need for potential improvements depending on future development. This area, that area circled there in blue, is, it includes Jane Street, Upland and Muncie, and the Home Park Boulevard area, the hotspots for SSOs and basement backups. We had four stakeholder meetings to design, to obtain design input and get information out to the public. The design and construction for these improvements is planned in three phases. Phase one is approximately $5 million and will upsize that large diameter pipe that runs along 63 from a 21-inch to a 48-inch from Home Park to Jane. Design is at 90%, and Phase one is expected to bid in the fall. Part of that Phase one also includes a relief sewer from Home Park to Fletcher, to hopefully mitigate future SSOs and backups in Home Park and Long Hill vicinity. So what we've got upcoming for 2021 to 2023 is laid out in the master plan. It includes improvements to the Douglas Lift Station and Forest Main. We have temporarily, have a temporary installed Forest Main now at Douglas. We're, we've got ongoing investigations to the I and I in that area, and then CIPP Phase 4, and more storm sewer cross-connection removals. So the connection of a storm sewer, a catch basin, a drain in the street to our sanitary system is part of the overload issue that we experience. Since the execution of the consent decree, we have had 40 storm intakes disconnected, and the remaining identified cross-connections are in service areas 12, 11, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 19. 12 more connections are scheduled for removal in 2021 to 2023. The C-MOM program lays out annual goals for cleaning and televising of the sanitary sewer to meet our overall goal, which is to clean every five years and televise every 10 years the 400 miles in the sanitary system. Our TV vans are equipped with Q's equipment. That lower corner there is one of our televising, our cameras. They're equipped with Q's equipment and use granite software for recording and grading each inspection. We pulled a report that showed through the end of June, and it showed us a set about 35% of our annual goal. That's actually doing pretty good, the summer and fall are when we get the most televising work done. So we are right on target. Waste management uses televising as its main investigative tool. It's not always the fastest or most efficient. This slide shows the line that runs through the Erb Warren Golf Course. After flooding in 2018, we televised part of that. In 2019, we smoke-tested part of it. And in 2020, we did a demo for this acoustic inspection, the equipment that showed in the, kind of the middle of that slide. Those acoustic inspections transmit signal, measure, and grade, and produce a report that we can layer in our GIS, and we're looking into purchasing that this fiscal year. About 2,000 feet was inspected in 45 minutes that day. When we TV, 2,000 feet might take a whole day or multiple days, depending on how rough a shape that line is in. And then we've also purchased our own smoke test equipment. We would previously contract that service out. But since the purchase of our equipment, we have tested Burn Bray Airline and La Porte Road Lift Station areas upstream of Aitton Lock and also a portion along the Cedar River. Okay, so this slide shows some of the recently purchased equipment we have for more cost-effective in-house repairs. Those top photos were, let's see, the 600 block of Boston, we discovered that break in the pipe. You can see it at the top of the pipe in the before photo, this spring. And that line is really deep. It's not something that our crews could have dug and repaired ourselves. But we have these sleeves that you send down. They expand, and it's a full structural strength repair. A sleeve like that for an eight-inch pipe is about $800, and the repair is done in about half a day. If we did a dig, it would be multiple days of work. And then the bottom photos show a manhole along the Cedar River on the west side. We have purchased these Rapid Seal sleeves. It's a heat shrink sheet and seals that manhole structure. This is a manhole that would be a source of inflow in flooding events prior to sealing. And the last slide for me is the rainfall and flow monitoring program that the consent decree requires us to have through our C-MOM program. We have volume calc meters at lift stations, area velocity meters at manholes, groundwater elevation wells, rain gauges, river gauges, and use weather data to determine potential I and I sources, identify areas we want to investigate, and potentially identify any capacity constraints as they develop. We use this data to preserve a historical picture of wet weather and flooding and identify trends over time. Currently, all of this data is collected manually on weekly or monthly basis. Future integration with SCADA would allow for real-time data analysis. We also produce a report that's included with our annual status report.
Good job. Thank you.
So as she was just kind of talking there just a little bit on the SCADA system, this is a new software that we just completed in 2020. And what this does, it's actually a supervisory control of data acquisition. So it gives our staff real time, either through a laptop or a touchpad, to let us know whatever is going on anywhere within the plant, to let us know what pumps, blowers, float controls, everything that's being able to work. We also have that in all of the buildings out at the wastewater plant. It also is tied into our lagoon, so the same thing that we can get real-life data out there, so that way we can data out there, so that way we can tie it into our software, so we can do a lot of trending as far as, you know, recording flows and other data that would be taking place as far as their maintenance that are, that would need to be there. This also is very intricate, like I said, when our staff, when it comes to night and weekends, they would be able to see and be able to turn things on and off if need be, you know, if an emergency was to arise. Some other software that, of course, we're looking at, kind of part of our other presentations that we're doing is Elements. And this is a software in the process right now of trying to get off the ground here. And what this is going to actually be able to do is tie into our, where she kind of commented a little bit earlier, our televising and our cleaning. So then that way, where now we do a lot of paper documentations. This way, we can kind of tie it right into that, do that electronic work order. So that way, when it comes to the record-keeping portion, it'll hopefully streamline that and then also give us better access to be able to retrieve that data when we need to go back and do follow-ups as far as trending and so on and so forth. So that's kind of like our two larger ones. Like I said, the one was finished in 2020 and Elements were in the process now. And then on the publication portion, I'm actually going to turn that portion over to Brian.
Good afternoon. First off, congratulations Laura. I thought you did a great job on presentation. Her work is so valuable to us. She's incredible resource for me. She knows the rules of the consent decree. She knows where we're at. Always knocking on her door, are texting her, so thank you for that Laura. We're talking now about the public education piece. One of the things that I think we're in a dire need of is to keep residents informed on what they can do to mitigate some of these things. We, it seems like we talk in code sometimes. We talk about, you know, you got to have backflow preventers. You got to have your sump pump. You know, what we want to do is really give an education piece to residents to inform them on how they can not only help themselves, but that, how they can help their neighbors and their citizens right next to each other and ultimately how they can help us. So we're going to be coordinating not only through Laura's office and Randy to get out a public education piece and maybe work with some neighborhood association groups to get this information out and to really inform residents so that we can move down the road and have people informed, so.
Good.
Yeah. Any questions about the CMOM portion of the presentation?
There, Pro-Tan.
Yes, Mr. Boson.
I just had a question on the, on the Dry Run Creek Lift Station Interceptor. And it's supposed to be completed this, this fall is what, but I drive by it on a daily basis and I haven't seen people working there forever. So I'm, I'm just curious, I mean, how we're going to accomplish that goal. The other, the other concern I had on that is if you drive by there today, you'll see a double manway hatch opened up like this and an extension ladder sticking down in it. But there's nothing to prevent any kids or public or anybody from climbing down that ladder.
And, and I have to agree with you on a lot of your points, Dave. That is something that I've been trying to manage with, with the contractor that we have. If you remember, the, the bids were wildly different.
Yes.
Okay. There's not a day that goes by that I don't have a conversation with our consulting engineer and trying to get our contractor to move faster on, on this project. It is overdue. But we are moving forward in some important phases and I have hope that we're going to be closing this project out.
I'm really concerned on a safety aspect though, sir, on the, on that extension ladder that's going down in that pit.
And I'm not quite sure. I was out there today. Now, we have multiple, we have an old structure, which is our current wet well. And then we have three new existing structures. One is a wet well, one's a dry pit, one's for flow monitoring. That might be new to me and opened earlier this week or something, because I was out there today and I did not see that.
It, it was, it was left unattended all weekend with a ladder.
That's concerning.
It is for me.
And it, well, not only that's concerning, but just the site in general has been concerning to me. And there has been a lot of correspondence concerning this contract and this contractor. I assure you, I, I've been on it pretty diligently and probably too aggressively at times, Alan.
Thank you.
I would say.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Boson.
Yeah, Brian. I know it was mentioned about the, the software and the program that, that is there, the
Elements?
Yeah.
Or SCADA.
Televising, cleaning and how it's all stored data and that. And my, my question is, what happens with that data if it's, the system is hacked? You get a virus or just the computer shut down?
Sure. We, we have a lot of data, not only on our, on our personal hard drives and stuff, but we also have a city server. And I'll let Chris speak to anything on this, but we, we feel pretty safe that not only do we have a lot of zip drives of, of camera footage and stuff, but we're also backed up on a city server. And Chris, do you have anything to add on that? I guess, I'm bringing him into wastewater treatment.
Chris does it all.
Brian and Chris, in other words, is there any way, is there any possibility that all that data can be lost?
So I'm never going to say never.
Because of these electronic systems and everybody's so dependent on them anymore.
So I won't ever say never, but we do have things in place. We have not only backup systems, but we have redundant backup systems. So basically what we're doing is we're backing up in one location, archiving it to another location. So we have multiple backup locations as well as we have software in place. We actually just went to a new antivirus and anti-malware application this, earlier this spring called CrowdStrike. And we feel like we've put things in place to do the best job we can to prevent this. Now, there's no system out there that's not one hundred percent. You can say that it's not going to be hacked or something. But we feel that we've put everything in place that we need to, to prevent that. And, and we continue to work on that every day, every week. We look at how we can make it even more difficult to put things in place. We're putting some things in place called two-factor authentication, which for those that access remotely, not only do they have to put a password in, they also have to have some physical device, like a cell phone that they get a code on, that they also have to put that in. So it's just another thing that we're implementing to try to prevent any, anything that could happen.
So Chris, it sounds like there's several different backups to this.
There is.
This data, okay.
Because we don't want to have just a backup. We want to make sure that we're taking that backup and we're putting it somewhere in case something happened to the backup, so.
And the other thing that, that I had, Brian and, and Brian and Laura, is that this is supposed to go out to people, the public. You know, hopefully seventy thousand plus people outside the area who really rely on Waterlow for some intelligent conversation. And so I just have a request, and that is that when terms like interceptor, lift station, CMOM, these acronyms are used, could every now and then you please at least say what they are? So that people are not just listening to words and saying, well, I hope to hell they know what they're talking about. You know, it'd be nice to have the public know exactly what it is that you are talking about in lay terms. And that's just a request on my part, Brian.
We appreciate that input.
And that's a good, I'm wondering if you're putting together public education, having a glossary, have someplace where all these acronyms and commonly used that most of us don't understand what they are? If you would have that, that glossary of terms, I think that'd be very helpful.
Well, we certainly appreciate that kind of input. We live in a universe of acronyms and, and shortcuts, so.
You talk funny all the time, Brian. All of you do. Great. Any other questions? Okay, good job. Back to you Randy or?
Let you go then Laura. I know she's got a swim meet she has to go to, so.
Thank you Laura.
Okay.
Oh, I was going to wait to the end Laura, but they are correct. I remember when we first started this journey, what, five and a half, six years ago to start actually addressing this. You were kind of thrown in the mix. You've been that rock that have kept things consistent and moving forward. There's a lot that people don't know on the other side and challenges, but you have been incredible, so. Want to thank you so much for your efforts and your work and I did all everything that Brian said. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to treatment, your favorite thing, right? So here is my presentation on treatment. We have a mission and of course, the mission kind of coincides with collection in some way. So our mission, you know, of the Waste Management Services Department is to properly operate and maintain the collection system, Laura, and the sewer maintenance crew. And we maintain that system infrastructure. We transport and treat wastewater without disruption or overflows. That is our goal. While meeting the needs of Waterloo's citizens, protecting surface and ground order resources and complying with all federal and state regulations. That little paragraph sums up a ton of work that we do every day, so. Here's some of our major accomplishments. Now, I don't want to sit here and read every one of our accomplishments. You guys all have eyes, so I'm going to highlight a couple of one, one of the big ones. Through legal appeal with the DNR, they agreed to reinstate our previous waste load allocation and permit limits. Our NPDS permit was reissued June first, 2021. In essence, the DNR did not like the way our water was diffusing across the Cedar River. And if you remember, we built a winged dyke and then we performed a bunch of studies. They still didn't like it. And eventually we had to lobby with them extensively to get our permit limits back reinstated. We got those reinstated and this is super important to us because it preserves not only our future for economic growth, but it gives not our, our treatment process a little bit of cushion in case, you know, we're dealing with biology here. You know, it gives us a little bit of cushion that we can reside in the permit limits. So that was a huge deal, having the NPDS permit. And again, here's, I'm acronyming you again, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. That's your permit that you get from the EPA that's mandated to get, that's issued through the DNR and then passed on to us. So that was a huge accomplishment for this year. Other things, we've got a satellite wet well project continues. I'll have a slide on that later on. Our Bio Dry Run Creek Interceptor and Lift Station work continues. Completion is scheduled. I have, I had it July, early July. I don't think we're going to make that. I have been, like I said to Councilman Boson, I've been on this contractor and, and hopefully we'll be finishing that up at least by the end of the summer. Our BioSalads contract is going at full steam. I'm very pleased with this contract. We have a, a good engineering firm at the helm and a good contractor. We're currently at fifty-seven percent completion. It's a big project that means a lot to us. Other, other items, I know last year we cleaned and replaced all the aeration membranes in the Eastern Aeration Basin number three. This is an annual goal that we have to go, we've got four basins, to go through each basin, to pump them dry so that staff can get down there. And basically what they're doing is they're replacing, think, think of a PVC tree and at the end of the PVC tree, there's these membranes, there's seven hundred and twenty-six of them. This is a big deal, guys. It's a, it's a safety deal. To contract this out would be a lot of money. So we started doing it ourselves, but it is extensive work and things have to be done right. Last year, we did basin number three. We filled it back up with wastewater. It wasn't behaving right. We had to drain it back down. So this is the kind of stuff that we're tackling now in our facility with our staff that makes a big difference. You're not going to see my name associated with big contracts anymore for these kind of services because I feel this is something that we can do. So this year, one of my goals is to get to Aeration Basin Four and then we're set, set for another five years before we got to go back and revisit this. So if, if anybody's ever, if you guys are interested in coming down, I'd be glad to show you this because right now we're getting ready for kickoff on basin number four. Other, other major accomplishes, of course, we did our CIPP Phase Four A. That was closed out in November. We're working on some preliminary design on Titus Lift Station, which is a, a pretty major player out in the lift station field. We've got a final clarifier, number three D watering Project was complete and now we're looking at, at ways to move forward on our final clarifier. We hosted some stakeholder meetings for the Highway sixty-three. Margaret, you were part of that and we appreciate your input on that. We submitted an intended use plan to the DNR for that Highway sixty-three and we applied for the construction permit. Some goals, like I said, we're going to rebuild that basin number four diffuser. We're moving forward on CIPP Phase Four A two. Talking about the clarifier, we're going to develop those plans and specs and submit them to council. Part of our NPDS permit that was issued this year, we do have to submit another nutrient reduction strategy. If you remember about four years ago, five years ago, we did that. We have to do it again because it's mandated, since we didn't make any major improvements in the nutrient reduction. So the DNR has given us a pass. Now we got to submit it again. So that'll be coming down that. We're going to begin some of the design on the anaerobic lagoon gas collection upgrades. We'll continue to administer and monitor these projects that we got, not only in the plant, but out in the field. Again, I hope to close out Dry Run Creek. And begging, most importantly to me is, is continue to maintain treatment compliance with all state and federal guidelines. I talk about DNR compliance and NPDS permit. I kind of already outlined what that is. There's a verbiage on it. To give you an idea of what's all in our permit, I mean, significant work has to be done. We have to collect samples. We, we conduct a hundred and thirty-three daily tests on influent effluent to comply with our NPDS permit. That's not including all the operational monitoring that we do on the side. Just to maintain, to look at our spreadsheets, see where we are in treatment. It's, it's a complicated science, but there's a lot of art to it as well. Right? Here's, here's a part of our permit is that we do get inspected by the EPA and the DNR. The DNR comes out every two years and they do an inspection. The EPA comes out about every five years. Here's an inspection summary on a sub-part of our, of our treatment, which is the industrial pretreatment. I'm pretty proud of this. This was kind of a surprise inspection. He showed up four days in advance and our staff was ready. They had everything documented. They had their phone correspondence and logs all up to date. They knew our industrial base by heart. They were able to contact them and say the EPA is coming out today. Are you okay with that? And they said yes, because that's the kind of relationship that we have with our industrial clients. And we've got a good workforce behind us that they know it all. So again, this was Kathy Skillings in there, in our industrial pretreatment lab coordinator that got us this great letter. So that's part of it. This is a comprehensive spreadsheet that, that kind of lists all the costs. Some of these are closed out, but all in red is the treatment portion of it. Some of this is ongoing, but this, you can tell by the bottom figure on the plant improvements, how much money we've been spending and how much money we're spending in the collection. This is no longer ignored infrastructure. There's been a lot of movement and it takes time. I talked about my project. The, the most important one we got going on is the BioSalads contract. This is a, a new WAZ tank. We're using old infrastructure and retrofitting it to save money. This new WAZ tank is capable of holding multiple days of solids wasting, because we got to do that every day. So this will protect us and even out the whole treatment scheme, especially if we've got downstream activities that we have to halt. That's part of the BioSalads contract. That's the new builder, are the blower building. Two new garage doors so that we can get into these high-energy efficient blowers and maintain them. This is the BioSalads, a new chemical feed building. This is an important key to this project. This chemical feed building will be injecting some ferric chloride into our digester complex. That keeps hydrogen sulfide at bay, but more importantly, it keeps what we call struvite crystals. It's a complicated chemistry thing that happens in my digester that starts to plug pipes. And every year I got to, we got to spend like thirty thousand dollars in man-hours to clean these pipes out. So this will prevent that in the future. More of the BioSalads project. These are new tankage for the polymer feed. This will be implemented in two spots out at our facility. What I'm really happy about this is that currently we use like a dry powder. That powder goes into the air. Employees got to wear masks and face shields. So we're going to go to a wet emulsion, which I feel is more cost-effective. So we're going to go to a wet emulsion, which I feel is more cost effective and also safer for employees. Here's the backbone of the BioSalads project. It's the centrifuges. Centrifuges use centrifugal force to spin the wet sludge and to make a cake. Currently, we we put out about 15% solids. These things can achieve 27%. The bottom line on that is that we pay for wet ton. It goes on to a big side dump trailer. It goes out to our land application. When we're paying for wet ton, now we're going to get 27% solid. So there's going to be a savings down the road as we make these dryer cakes. Really excited about this, but I'm a wastewater nerd, so whatever. Another part of the BioSalads project is these new methane boilers in the digester complex. We replaced two of them because one was already relatively new. These do capture methane that is naturally produced in the breakdown of organic solids in our digesters. And then that methane is captured in these boilers used to heat the digester complex because we're bringing temperatures up to 131 degrees. We got to heat 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 to break down those solids. This is a part of the satellite wet well, but it's called the crossover structure. This is on Lafayette Street. This is I you might remember going through council on this. This is a big deal to us as well and a big deal for the community because it allows us to manipulate flows from across the river, from one side, either the domestic or the industrial. This protects us in a lot of ways. It gives us flexibility, but if we had something catastrophic go wrong with the pipe under the river, we can just manipulate that flow to the other pipe and then investigate what went wrong. We don't need another cattle congress in 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 our life, right? Dry Run Creek, I think we've kind of talked about Dry Run Creek, but this is kind of a photo that captures what's going on. I know that they're going to be demoing the new, the old wet well on that here real soon, but I got some criteria they have to meet before they do that. Now I'm going to have Randy talk about the fiber backbone. And then if we got, if you guys got questions after that, I'll be happy to answer.
Good job, Brian. Thank you.
Yes, so currently where we're at is we're on the 30% design phase on the fiber backbone, and this is going to be for giving us that communication that'll tie into our SCADA system for both the sanitary and storm sewer. So this is going to be huge because currently, right now, it's kind of on a dialer. We'll get a call in, but it don't necessarily give us the breakdown as far as what it is. So staff always has to go out there instead of being able to say, okay, if we just have a float stuck or or a pump stuck on, they can actually, you know, be able to see that right from the SCADA system and be able to turn it on or off or or use a redundant, you know, everything that we do, there's always redundancy. We always have a spare. So it gives them that capability. So this is actually kind of an exciting phase, which we just had our another follow-up meeting on that today. So we're moving pretty quick on that. So I guess with that being said, if you have questions for Brian or I?
Yes.
I just had a quick one. You brought up cattle congress, and we had we had people come before the council and accuse us of dumping raw sewage into the river. And there was a, the DNR investigated that, correct?
The cattle congress?
Yes.
Yeah, they were they were part of that. They were well aware of where we were on that. They knew that we had, since it was under the levy, we had a timeframe. We moved really quick on that. They were, DNR is aware of everything.
Can you give us an update on that and how that whole thing came out? Yeah, and how that all came out?
Cattle congress is.
What's that?
Martin Peterson from the Legal Department. I've reviewed recent correspondence from Attorney John Hall from Washington, DC. As I understand it, his services were retained after a complaint in 2017 with regard to a direct discharge into the river. The U.S. Attorney's Office for the Northern District of Iowa convened the grand jury on that issue in federal court. All criminal indictments are brought in front of and returned by the grand jury. It's a little different than state court where we hardly ever use the grand jury to indict criminal defendants. But in the federal system, it's always used. And apparently, in 2017 or early 2018, the grand jury was convened on that issue. And Mr. Hall recently corresponded and said he spoke with the U.S. Attorney's Office and confirmed that the original grand jury determined that further action was not appropriate. And the U.S. Attorney's Office recently indicated there is no pending action related to that allegation, and the matter is now closed and has been for some time.
Right. Thank you, Martin. Yeah, that's not necessarily related to cattle congress. Okay, that was about some some accusations made in 2017 against our department. They were discharging raw sewage into our into into the river. I got them flipped around. Right. Just to make you. About this, too. Yeah, well, cattle congress, and I just wanted to make sure that you're aware, you know, when we're talking about cattle congress, DNR, and everybody was aware that needed to be aware, and we took appropriate action. Marty's referencing accusations that were made in 2017, 2018, and I think a lot of the council remembers that there were pictures provided of of some some floatable material and outbound flume, and there was all kinds of hearsay that we were pumping raw wastewater sewage into the Cedar River. We don't, we don't do that in our department, and we take every means necessary to comply with regulations in our NPDS permit. So basically, Marty's got that document that says that issue is closed.
What happened at cattle congress?
Cattle congress was when we had a forced main break. Maybe I shouldn't have brought it up, but cattle congress, we had a forced main break. It was underneath the levy, and it was leaking into the river. Okay, now, this is, that wasn't an easily easily repaired item. That required us to not only dig under the levy to repair that pipe, but also keep our eyes on the river to make sure that we didn't exceed that elevation and then inundate the the citizens in the town with with river water. So that matter was taken care of quite quickly, but it was it was a lot to do as well of accusations that we weren't weren't doing it correctly.
And I remember sitting here, the first one, and just thinking like, I just can't believe people would think we would do something like that. And, you know, I'm just glad we have the report to show that the city was not doing that, which was being claimed for the 2007 incident. So, you know, thank you, guys, for your diligence and your work. And you're right, the cattle congress, you got old pipes, you got old structure. So that's part of the reason why all of this, the money that we're putting into this to start to redo that so that the system will last us the next 100 years. Hopefully, we'll continue to work on it within that 100 years, but putting in a resilient infrastructure, that's going to take us to the next 50, 60 years. So great work. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I want to, if I may, back up. I remember two weeks ago, Mr. Morrissey had questions, and we ran out of time. So did you want to answer any of those or ask any of those questions tonight?
Well, Madam Chair, what a memory you've got.
I know. Every once in a while, it works.
Amazing.
I know. Doesn't work often, but sometimes.
Because I was going to bring it up. I don't have to now.
Good.
Yeah, well, thank you. And one of the things with the BioSalads that I was wondering, because I brought this up in the past and previous people who are running the show down there, maybe you remember it, Brian, but it sure would be nice if the city could do something like this and maybe make a little bit of money, even though they might have to break even, and that's making money off our crap. And does the making of this, as you described there, the solid more of a dry cake, does that make it more readily marketable to do something like that where the city?
The honest answer to that is is no. You're making a dryer cake. You're taking moisture out of it. It's still, it's still, the 503 regs that are part of the DNR and EPA guidelines, there's certain criteria for, you know, what class sludge you have, right? So basically, this BioSalads contract addressed, you know, outdated infrastructure, preparing us for the future, dryer cake, new boilers and stuff. But what it didn't address is is some of these regulations that you have. There'd be extra steps that you'd have to be taken to to say, mix that with fertilizer or whatever it may be for for citizen application. I'm not saying it's not unattainable. You could do it, but the last thing you'd want to do is is spend money on it. Break even would be great, in my opinion.
Okay. And what I was wondering, going to all the other questions that I had before Randy, is if I could move there, if that's okay with you?
So I guess I just want to make sure, does anybody else have any questions on?
Can I just ask one question that you brought up? You're adding a new department head for safety, and you're going to be addressing safety for your own department. You said you're going to take that training citywide. Are you going to address all ocean compliance? Is that going to be an official training program?
So like I said, when we, you know, when we originally kind of discussed this, it's one of the things that we've been, part of our safety committee that we've been doing citywide. One of the things, I guess, at the onslaught for me, anyway, is we weren't necessarily doing everything consistent from department to department, especially in public works. So that's why when, you know, we took this in consideration and looking at what we had a need, that's part of the reasons why we looked at restructuring this. So we wanted to create that position. And then after doing that and visiting with the mayor and HR as well, you know, we looked at this can also potentially hopefully address other departments as well. So when you pretty much take public works, a lot of the training does overlap into parks and leisure and other departments. So the only thing I just said is since we are the ones that are going to be funding it, I would just like to make sure that we get everything in public works kind of addressed as far as what I'd like to see, and then be able to expand it further throughout the city. And then that way, we have more uniformity and continuity.
We've needed that for a long time.
Yes.
So good job.
So, yeah, like I said, it's, and the exciting part is, like I said, we're just finishing up with the first round of interviews. I'm going to be setting up second here shortly. So before too much longer, hopefully, I'll be bringing somebody to you two.
And thank you on that because that's been also a huge need with regards to insurance as well and conversations with PDCM. So the consistency, taking a holistic look at how this impacts the entire city is good. So thank you for your leadership in trying to figure out a way to make that happen. And thank you, too, Mr. Brian. I've never seen someone so passionate about sludge as as you are, you know. So we.
It's so knowledgeable.
So really, and I remember taking a tour about 10, 12 years ago and just walking through and hearing you explain what's taking place. It's really a, our treatment plan is a phenomenal facility, and it has such an impact, not just for the residents, but also for the future of business. So thank you, guys, so much for for all your efforts. Anything else?
Just add my thanks because your department, your whole area has gone through so much, and you've risen to the challenge and addressed the problems, and we should all be very proud of what you've accomplished. So thank you. But back to Mr. Morrissey with his questions.
Well, one one final thing in this fiber backbone, what are all those red dots, Randy?
So what those are is a combination of both sanitary and storm lift stations. So that those are pretty much all the different assets for which we are going to be running the fiber to. So that way, once that gets connected, everything will eventually come back to the wastewater plant. And like I said, that'll tie into our SCADA system. And that way, we'll be able to have, just like what we do into the plant, have full access. You know, of course, there'll be some updating electronics in those areas as well, too. But so give us that flexibility, you know, to see if there's problems and schedule maintenance and so on and so forth. Because it won't be just strictly the SCADA, but it'll it'll tie into our elements, work order program that we're also doing as well.
Okay, thanks. Going back to a few weeks ago, I think it was three weeks ago, right? Two?
Yeah, two.
Oh, okay. Was, first of all, you had mentioned about the garage mechanics and that there was one position open.
That's correct.
And I had heard that there was somebody else who was retiring at the end of June. Did that happen? So that there's now two positions open or?
Not that I I haven't been notified of another person. I know we have individuals who, at any time, are eligible to retire, but I have not received any of the paperwork for doing that.
Okay, so still, you're sitting at one?
Yes, correct.
And that's not any on any delay hire or anything?
We are just in the process now of, we've got our personnel rec information submitted. We're just waiting for the next meeting to go forward. I personally, that is one position I, hopefully, we don't have to wait for. I know during the budgeting process, we did, you know, reduce one of our mechanics. This is not the one that we were looking at reducing, so I'm hoping that this is one that does not get delayed, but it'll go through the committee.
And I'm sure that Mr. Mayor will make sure that there's no delay with that.
He's just one of four on that committee.
He's the big head conch.
So we've got to be nice to the other three of us as well.
Be nice to living in the means in which we budget it for, so we'll talk about it.
We will.
He's always been creative in finding way to to get it done. But we're not talking about mechanics here.
Oh, I was.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, I was.
We had questions from, well, yeah, but from two weeks ago, we had to cut it short, and Mr. Morrissey didn't get to ask all of his questions. So we said that he can carry those forward and ask Randy to do.
We should do you an assist.
Well, I suppose, if you want to call it that.
So go ahead, Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, and you had talked about cross-training and how that's done within the central garage, I believe, primarily. Is that correct?
Yeah, that was one of the areas for which I was giving example, and I guess I'll just to kind of reiterate that. So when I first started, you know, pretty much what the process was is we'd have one individual that was working on fire equipment, another one that was working on like automated trucks and sanitation. We had one individual that was kind of doing our servicing and that. So there wasn't as much cross-training that was taking place. So kind of after looking at that and once we restructured it and we brought the Fleet Maintenance Director on board, that was one of the things that we want to do, especially knowing that we've had a lot of individuals that were eligible to retire, especially here in the New Fiertu. So when you look at the eight full-time, well, one short right now, but half the individuals we have 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 less than two years of tenure with the city. So that's one of the reasons why, when we are looking at that, we want to make sure that we're cross-trained so more than one individual can work on fire trucks or sanitation and so on and so forth. So that's that's what makes it exciting, you know, because they're, you know, when you look at all the different types of equipment we have, everything from commercial vehicles to emergency, whether it's police and fire, special vehicles when it's sanitation, construction equipment, loaders, graders, skid loaders, all the way to small weed eaters and and mowers, you know, like I said, so it's, you know, in this day and age, it's kind of hard to get one person that is specialized in all those areas. So that's why we're, you know, trying to invest in those. And it's also going to be, when we talk about the safety training coordinator, we're also looking at expanding that so we can bring more training on board to get them in, get our staff some additional training as well, too. More, especially when we look at a lot of the unique equipment for which we have. And I will tell you, I've actually had some conversation with some other local cities in the Cedar Valley, you know, to when we were talking about the vendors down the road, trying to get them in, and we can collaborate together as far as, you know, maybe splitting the cost as far as training on some of that special equipment, too. But that's going to be a little ways down the road, but it's it is something that we are looking into.
And the reason why I brought that up, Randy, was because, I mean, I, you could possibly make a comparison between the PSO issue that goes on Cedar Falls with the dedicated fire versus and the dedicated police and how the cross-training, the PSO concept has cost as far as the experiential aspect of that. And that's my concern if there's cross-training that, and I know, having been here for the years I've been here, is that that there have been mechanics who have been dedicated just like to the to the fire department or just to the police vehicle maintenance or, you know, they were specialized. And are we losing any of that experiential knowledge by doing the cross-training rather than doing the dedicated worker on a specific area concept?
I would actually say no. So, for instance, when I started, you know, evaluating that department, we had some equipment in the fire department and sanitation, that we had vehicles that were down over a year, just because we only had one individual that was working on that. And when you look at the amount of the fleet that they have in some of those areas, that made it, you know, quite challenging for them to keep up, not only just maintaining them, but then also making sure that all the preventative maintenance was getting done. So, in the process of cross-training, and when I say cross-training, I mean, for instance, we've sent an individual, you know, to fire training, one of our new employees, so that they're actually, you know, learning how to maintain the pumps and do all those things. So, it's not that they're just cross-trained, you know, while they are cross-training with a full-time employee, you know, young and new, but we're also, you know, sending them to school to make sure that they're doing that. And I can honestly say, at this point in time, we don't have equipment that's been there that long. For the most part, I mean, we have stuff that might be in there for a few weeks, but a lot of that, right currently, has to do with getting the parts. I mean, right now, just with COVID and other, there's a lot of other factors going into it. I mean, that's kind of the case. But, I can tell you, with the fire department, you know, because of the cross-train, we were able to kind of get that up. We don't have vehicles that have been in there as long. Sanitation is the same, so, which has to do with the cross-training for which we have done.
And, I mean, going back four years, at least four years ago, I mean, that was one of the big issues that was being talked about on council when the subject got brought up, was the amount of vehicles, the backlog that there was, and what you're saying is that that's been caught up on.
That is correct. Yep, and it has to do with a lot of the restructuring and the oversight for which we have. You know, and being down a mechanic right now does not help, but we're still, you know, we're still keeping up with that. So, I mean, it's not just, you know, to me, the cross-training is protecting the city because at any given time, somebody can leave. And the one downside is, when you have all that institutional knowledge and someone goes to leave, you can't, you're not necessarily going to get all of it, but, you know, as much as you can to make sure that you, we're at least ways doing our due diligence to make sure we're protected, so we do have somebody that knows how to do those maintenance. That's doing our job, and trying to do it cost-effectively and efficiently, too.
Okay. Another question that I had from a few weeks back was the recycle sites. There's four of them in town.
Correct.
It looked like one got moved. The one out at Ainsborough got moved up closer to, I think, what was that, Black Hawk Street? And I think you addressed that last time, anyway. But, when this had all been discussed, and the increase in the fee and that, it was said that there was going to be, the security was going to be beefed up, and the cameras, there were going to be monitoring cameras to pick up, especially license plates of people who were dumping illegally. But then, also, one of the questions was the taking of pictures right with inside the garbage truck of the refuse as it's getting dumped to see if people are illegally putting or dumping stuff into containers where it shouldn't be. And then, a third part of that was the money was supposed to go to hire two more workers to help out, especially with the illegal dumping issues and code enforcement and that. Where are those three things?
Okay, so, first, I'll talk about the cameras when it comes to the recycling sites. So, initially, we started with a less expensive route, using, like, trail cameras. The unfortunate part, they were not able to capture the license plates for which we were hoping that they were going to be able to do. So, with that being said, we've actually, it would have been the last meeting we finally have been working on getting more or less kind of like our traffic cameras, is what we're doing. So, it's a little bit more expensive, but we should be able to do that. When you, in particular, when you're talking about the Ainsborough site, we were having a lot of issues with, unfortunately, people that were putting things that, not inside the container, and it was blowing, getting down into the pond and that. Plus, it had to do with the access for the cameras to be able to capture everything. So, prior to my tenure, because I can only go back two and a half years, but originally, it was closer up to the entrance of Singing Bird. And we're actually going to be splitting the difference. We're actually going to be moving it down closer to where the lift station is, but staying on the dry side of levee, so we don't have to be impacted on that. But, it also is going to give us better visibility for our cameras to capture individuals who are putting things and stuff out there. So, just to kind of give you a little bit of background, our curbside collection program, we've had zero contamination with that, so we haven't had anything. Unfortunately, when it comes to our drop-off sites, we've had some contamination issues. It's primarily within the recycling, or the plastic portion of it. That's where we're getting the largest portion. So, that's where we're really trying to address it with the cameras to capture those, and some of it has to do with the visibility. The other aspect that you did bring up, but I also want to talk about it, too, is some of the landscaping and stuff, too, which we want to make sure that we can get the cameras and stuff done first, know what's going to work, and then we can try to address the landscaping. The other aspect of that, just to follow up the two employees, yes, we already have those hired, and they are on staff, so that's, those two additional individuals have been hired. Now, when it comes to the cameras for the automated trucks, that's part of what's called the routeware program. So, we're in the initial rollout of that. That's where, currently, the phase that we're in right now is installing the RFID tags, for which we've got the majority of the tags in, and that's where the additional staff is also helping with that. And when you talk about the cameras, that is part of what we need to help correct some of the issues for which, like, just like what you were kind of referring to, if we get somebody, say, put a car battery in there that they're not supposed to, where we'll be able to get that picture inside the hopper kind of showing, yes, that's an item that wasn't supposed to be in there, and therefore, we'd be able to follow up with it. And not only will do that, but if we have an individual, let's just say they didn't set their cannon out. You know, we're all wanting to provide service, but I can tell you, we do have some individuals that very frequently we have, don't have their carts out in time. This way, it'll also give us that capability, you know, to be able to crack down on those individuals and be able to do that. That'll be part of our policies that we'll be bringing down after we get the full implementation done. So, like I said, we want to make sure that we get all the RFID tags installed, get all the cameras and that onto the equipment and on that portion. And I should probably state, you know, it's kind of part of the rollout. You know, initially, when we started installing some of the tags, you know, we were going to kind of do a larger press release as far as how we were going to kind of tackle that project. The one thing that we've noticed, you know, and like I said, we're just at the very beginning stages of this, and, you know, we have a little over twenty thousand tags that we have to put on. We've kind of done a little bit of notification, just kind of on our Facebook page. But, the one thing that I don't necessarily want to do is get too much out there, is exactly, this is how we're going to go do it, if for some reason, we're not able to obtain that. So, right now, just to give you guys a little bit of background on how we are actually doing it, we're focusing on, on any given day, we can have up to six different routes. So, what we're doing is, we're focusing on one route per week. And then, the, and so, we're getting out there right away at the beginning of the day, and we have individuals associating the RFID tags to the carts that we don't have them. It's relatively easy, because, I mean, we can see, you know, if a cart has an R on it, it already has a built-in RFID, so that makes it relatively easy. And if it doesn't, then what we're doing is, we're cross-referencing the cart number along with the new RFID tag, and then that's what goes to that account. In the process of doing this, also, we're also cross-referencing to make sure that the right cart is at the right location. And this is kind of where I, you know, unfortunately, I don't have a site up right now, but where we're kind of showing some of our lost revenues, where we had individuals that didn't have the right-sized cart. You know, one was for ten years, and the other one was over thirteen years, and just those two alone was a little over three grand worth of revenue that was lost. So, once we get this fully implemented, I, you know, it should be able to correct that. It's also going to give us the technology for what we're going to be able to need. So, if for some reason, a cart ends up at the wrong place, it's going to show us, you know, because it's tied into our GIS, the lat-long, exactly where we did it, time, date, stamp, so that way, we know right where to go get it. Because that's, from past experience in other communities of doing this, RFID tags have been good, but if it's not tied into your GIS to where you know where you picked that up, that's the hard part. So, that's where this, you know, software is going to be able to do that.
Can I interrupt for a second, Mr. Morrissey? Because Ms. Klein had a question, and you've had a couple. So, we're going to ask Mrs. Klein for her question, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay.
It is a question, I just wanted to pay a compliment.
Oh, well paid.
When Mr. Anderson got up and talked about what, you know, happened at the different areas where we had the legal opinions, I was reminded of when I started, all those years ago. And there was an atmosphere of distrust, and you know what? I was thinking, that's, for me, that's gone away. And for just about all the citizens, I think it's gone away in your department. You just are so open, your team is so open. I've never, ever had a problem getting an answer from you guys, and you go out of your way to make sure that the layperson understands it. And I've had compliments from the people out there about the same thing, about how you're excessively kind to them, and you're very patient. And I just, I wanted to pay you guys and your team, who are not here, that compliment, because it's well-deserved, and I felt it needed to be that.
Good job. Good job from all of us. Can I piggyback on something that Mr. Morrissey, and it ties right into what you asked? We get the two new people that you've already hired. At one point, I thought we were maybe going to have those two people help with code enforcement. Has that worked out?
Yes, so, once again, kind of going back to when I was originally started, and of course, you know, we had to start the recycling program fairly quick. As I said, our vendor, well, we dumped some recycled net in the morning, and that afternoon, we've no longer to take it, so, I mean, we kind of had to implement it fairly quick. So, we were several years, I think, at least at that time, if I recall correctly, I think, or at least two years behind. We were at least ways within the same calendar year. We were definitely doing a lot better. I would, are we, let's say, a hundred percent caught up as of today? No, we're not. Some of it has to do with, you know, some of the size of the cleanups, it's a coordination effort. And I was kind of hoping that, you know, unfortunately, we could have started the routeware more in the winter months, because it, you know, we weren't, we didn't normally have the yard waste collection, and just the timing hasn't worked. So, like I said, we're definitely within the same calendar year, and I would say definitely, by fall, we'll have everything caught up.
Help out and help code enforcement get caught up.
Oh, yes. Yep, and it's a group effort, it's not just those, you know, we, same thing again, we cross-train, so not only are they learning the automated routes, but they're also learning cart exchanges and code enforcement and illegal dumps and everything.
Good, thank you. Now, unless anybody else had some questions?
Anybody else want to interrupt?
I'm not going to interrupt, Pat, but I have questions.
No, go ahead.
No, no, sir, I will email you the questions, because I have a whole page of questions.
Okay.
Oh, boy. Okay, well, then, I'll go back to Mr. Morrissey.
Okay, and final thing, and that is, being a person who uses those recycle sites before, one of the things I've noticed, and maybe Wright Environmental could fix this quickly, I would hope, is that, like, when you go to plastic, or when you go to any of them, they don't say what you can't put in. That would be great, because some say different things on them, Randy. And it'd be nice to have them be standard and uniform, because as an example, I've gone there in the plastic part and seen styrofoam in there, and I know styrofoam's not supposed to go in there. I've gone there, and I've seen bags in there. Bags aren't supposed to go in there, but there's nothing that says that they don't. So, if people aren't aware of that, then how do they know not to do that?
So, one thing that we have done here recently is, we actually have put an informational board up there as far as what is acceptable and what's not on all four locations. So, we do have that there, but as far as on the containers themselves, you know, it's something I can look into as far as whether or not they can try to do some more public education there. I know, like I said, I know our, we've done it on our Facebook page, and then, like I said, we also have a new informational board that's at all four locations, you know, trying to help educate the public as far as what's acceptable and what's not.
Well, I'm just speaking from practicality and from using those, is that it sure would help if they were right there where they placed those big dumpsters that you can't put this stuff in there. Then, it makes it pretty evident to anybody who's going to violate those that they're doing so knowingly, and that's where those safety, security cameras, to me, would come in place, Randy.
Is that all of your questions, Mr. Morrissey?
And comments, thank you.
Okay, good. Dave, Mr. Bosson, do you want to try to?
I can do a few of them.
But, let's say, five minutes.
Well, I don't know if Randy can answer them in five minutes.
I will do my best.
I'll just email him, how's that sound?
Okay.
I don't want to disrupt this flow.
Okay, okay. Then, any other questions for this afternoon?
Thank you for the work you've done, through the good and the bad, we all know. Thank you so much.
We appreciate it, yes. Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, terrific. See you back in a few minutes for finance.